Ladies and gentlemen, if you would pay attention just for a minute. In the back is a flip chart for those who wish to sign in to speak. If you don't sign in, you will not have a position on the agenda. You will not be allowed to speak until at the very end of the meeting. If you want to participate in the town hall portion and citizen's comment, please sign up with the flip chart in the back. There's more chairs up front, up here, for those who want to sit down. And if you would be patient, we'll get started here in just a few minutes as soon as Mr. Coleman comes back. Just go ahead, a few folks coming in back there in the back. The ones of you are here and registered, I can find them to see, we appreciate it. I want to thank each one of you for being here tonight. We have a panel of hopefully listeners over here tonight. I'd sort of like to introduce each one. We have our county administrator, Allen Hours. County attorney, Allen Aaron Munson. We have Commissioner Strickland, Mrs. Strickland. We have Commissioner Clyde Taylor. And we have a guest from the city of Atlanta, Georgia, Mr. Mark Murrow. He's with the Georgia Department of Agriculture. We have our chief of police, Matt Dory. We've got a seat for you somewhere there, I'm sure. And again, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for being here tonight. Thank you for your support in this issue. It's been a long time coming. It's been a good 12 months for me, being active in this animal control situation here. I think we're bringing a group of people together here that this is what I've been pushing for all along, is trying to get the animal enthusiasts and our staff all on the same page. And this is my number one goal tonight, is to achieve this. Get everybody working together, get everybody working in the same direction. And hopefully that we're going to be able to get everybody with a smile on their face about some of these issues we've been having to deal with. We do have some presentations tonight. And with that said, we'll get right on into the meeting. Jeff Kilgore is going to go over the meeting guidelines for us. And then we'll go right into our agenda. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a lot that this group has put together. They've worked very diligently to prepare a full program for you. And so we're going to try to hold to a tight schedule. And everybody that's going to be recognized is either signed up, is already on the agenda. And you will be held to a three-minute time limit. For any questions, please make sure that your questions are substantive to the issue of animal control and not relating personal experiences or stories that you've had at animal control. The answers from the respondents up here will also be timed to three minutes to try to stick to a schedule. If you have a copy of the agenda, you can see that the minutes are assigned for each section of the agenda. And so we're going to try to hold to that. If people insist on standing up and interrupting and causing problems, then we will ask you to leave. Commissioner Coleman, sorry, introduced the chief of police is here. Rod Ellis is here. There are a number of stout fellows here that have the ability to carry weapons. And so we don't want to kick anybody out, but we've... Also like to recognize Bill Brunson. You know, if we were standing properly, we'd have guys instead of the ladies having to carry their weapon. Bill Brunson's here, who's Commissioner-elect, back here over on this side. Johnny Case, the city commissioner. Mayor Harvey was here, hiding behind somebody, okay. And if there's anybody else elected office that we missed, then send me a letter tomorrow and I'll apologize to you. So we'll get started. Sign-up chiefs here. So if your name's not on here, you will not be able to participate in the town hall public discussion, which will be great because then we'll get done with it. So the first person on the agenda is the former chairman of the advisory board. And her name is Marcy DeSart. And she was right here.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for coming. For those of you who have not met me, I'm Marcy DeSart. You've probably read about me in the newspaper, which is a good and bad thing. But anyway, thank you very much for coming tonight. As Commissioner Coleman said, this has been a long time coming. We know we have a lot of supporters out there and a lot of animal advocates in Glen County. And I think that we need to do more, provide more opportunities for folks to come together and express their support in ways other than social media and letters to the editor. So one thing that Commissioner Coleman asked me to do, or he felt like I deserved the opportunity, to provide my side of the story since I was not allowed that opportunity in March when I was swiftly removed from the Glen County Animal Control Advisory Board. I was appointed to the board in June of 2009. And I was in the middle of my third three-year term this year when I was removed from the advisory board. So my involvement with Glen County Animal Control dates back a little over five years. The reasons I was removed from the board, I will tell you, were not based on facts. And I'll give you my theory as to why I was removed from the advisory board. Last fall, I requested through public information requests, eight years' worth of data pertaining to Glen County Animal Control. This is public information, it's not confidential. And I ran the numbers from 2006 to 2012. And then at the beginning of this year, I added 2013 numbers into the mix. And suffice it to say that the story that those numbers tell is not a nice story. In the last eight years, the data revealed that 50% of the dogs and 83% of the cats that entered Glen County Animal Control did not make it out alive. That is over 7,000 dogs and 11,000 cats. So since 2006, over 18,000 animals have perished at Glen County Animal Control. You have these charts and graphs stapled to your agenda. And I think that's kind of laid the foundation for our No Kill efforts. If these numbers don't justify the need for improvement and change, I don't know what will. I'm going to explain, you have two sets of graphs and charts. One set consists of three. You've got your dog data, your cat data, and then dog and cat data combined. That's basically intake, tells you the outcome percentages. The other set focuses on live release rates. For those of you who are familiar with the concept of No Kill and the No Kill equation, No Kill is defined by 90% of the animals that enter a facility leave alive, whether it's through adoption, transfer, or redeemed or returned to owner. So the other set of three graphs and charts tells you what the live release rates were for cats and dogs during the same time period. You can see that dogs had an average live release rate of 39%. Cats had an average live release rate of 14%. 14. I went public with these numbers. Last fall, I attended the Best Friends Animal Society Conference in Jacksonville, the No More Homeless Pets Conference. The Glen County Animal Control Advisory Board agreed to pay for my registration as well as one other person. That opportunity was offered to staff. They declined, and so another volunteer went with me. And we learned an insurmountable amount of information at this conference. And one of the main things that I learned was the importance of being familiar with your data. And I came back from that conference and I requested these numbers. And the rest is history, pretty much. But that conference was kind of the impetus to come back and say, "We're going to get to the bottom of this, and we're going to find out where we stand so we know where we need to go." Also in November, some of you may or may not be aware, a new initiative or cause came on the scene, and that's No Kill Glen County. Shelley Budlinski and I co-founded No Kill Glen County mid-November. Since that time, we have raised almost $5,000. We have subsidized the adoption of over 150 animals at Glen County Animal Control, meaning that we've paid half the adoption fee for adopters. So the adoptions have cost them $25, not 50. We've paid for the altering of, I believe, seven community cats. And most recently, we received a $1,600 grant from Hello Goodbye, the thrift store associated with St. Mark's Episcopal Church. That $1,600 grant is going to pay for the altering and rabies shots of 25 cats in the city of Brunswick. So in a very short amount of time, No Kill Glen County has made a mark on this community. We've educated people about what No Kill is. There seems to be a big misconception about No Kill. But again, it's very fundamental, it's very simple. It means that you employ a comprehensive approach to saving animals. And we'll talk a little bit about the No Kill equation. But I feel like in the last six to eight months, the term "No Kill" is much more mainstream in Glen County than it was this time last year. And so to that end, I want to thank whoever is a supporter of No Kill Glen County because it takes a village. Thank you for your donations, for networking the animals, and for trying to educate other people regarding what it's all about. You may or may not be aware that the city of Jacksonville, one hour south of here, they reached No Kill status for the first quarter of 2014. Huge accomplishment. Jacksonville is one of, if the not largest geographical cities in the United States. And they reached No Kill for the beginning of this year, which is a phenomenal undertaking. They've done that through partnering with First Coast No More Homeless Pets, Friends of Jacksonville Animals, and the Target Zero Institute. Some of you may have attended the TZI presentation in February. Rick Ducharme was here and provided a presentation on the success stories in Jacksonville. We've tried to tap into the resources that are available to us. Because knowledge is power and information is key. And we feel unfortunately that a lot of that information has been ignored and opportunities have been squandered. And people haven't made the most of the opportunities that have been set before them. A lot of people believe in No Kill. I don't believe this room is very divided regarding whether you're pro or anti wanting to save animals. I think for the most part, the community has spoken and Glen County has made it clear that they are very pro-No Kill. And it's very unfortunate that the resistance has come from within. And I'll speak for myself, saying that I'm not sure that we have the right people in the right positions to make this happen in Glen County. And if you don't believe in No Kill, and you're not a proponent of it, and you're not going to be an agent to change and evolve in Glen County, then we need to get people in those positions who are believers and going to serve as agents of change. So we have a lot of information in the back. We're happy to email, and please contact us. I want to thank Commissioner Coleman for calling this meeting, for listening to me now for about a year and a half, almost daily, about a lot of different issues. He has embraced his role as a county commissioner. He understands what it means to be a public servant. We wouldn't be here tonight if that was not the case. So thank you for being an independent thinker and for taking action. I also just want to give a quick thank you to my partner in crime, Shelley Budlinski, the co-founder of No Kill. I probably wouldn't have come this far without her steadfast support and assistance. And if anybody believes in making this possible, she does. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda, citizens' opportunity to speak. You must have already been signed in at the beginning of the meeting. We're going to do this kind of like if any of you played softball or baseball when you were a kid. Donna's up to bat, Martha's on deck. So we don't have everybody lined up all at once. When Martha's up here speaking, we'll get Joyce Cherry next, on deck. So we'll only have two people standing up here at one time. And there is, I believe, a three-minute time limit. So Donna, if you want to come up, and then Martha, if you want to get on deck. And just so you know, Joyce Cherry is next. Who's timing?
Hello, everybody. I'm Donna Espinazi. It's nice to meet you all. Thank you. I'm on the Friends of Glen Animals page. I'm very active with it. And I wanted to just come up here and thank you all very much for your support. The page has grown tremendously in a very short period of time. And it's thanks to you all for sharing the page, sharing the posts that the animals have gotten adopted. And I thank you all so much on the page. And I thank you for your support so, so much. We did a fundraiser recently that I couldn't believe that you all, not me, you all raised almost $1,000 in 10 hours. And it was to sponsor all the dogs. And because of that, all the dogs at Glen County Animal Control are sponsored now, as well as the cats. Thanks to the kind donations to No Kill Glen County, all the cats are sponsored. So now all the cats and dogs are sponsored. Since the beginning of July, we've had 20 dogs adopted. One was returned, but we're not going to talk about that right now. I just wanted to say thank you very, very much for your support on the page. I wanted to come up here and thank you all personally because I haven't met very many of you, but I have talked to you a lot on Facebook. So thank you. That's all I'm going to say before I start crying. And thank you for your support very much. And that's it. So thank you.
Bring me my cheese.
I went to Wisconsin, she wanted cheese, and she won't get anywhere right here. My name is Martha Grant. I am a volunteer at Glen County Animal Control. Have been there three years, three days a week, sometimes four. There are a core group of us who are there, week in, week out, all kinds of weather, doing whatever we can do for the animals at Glen County Shelter. In the early part of this year, we got together and we are forming a 501(c)(3), Coastal Animal Rescue Society, or CARs is our acronym. And we are a not-for-profit corporation in the state of Georgia. And we have our EIN number. We are waiting on the feds for nonprofit status. Hopefully, we'll have it within the next two months. When we get our nonprofit status, we will start a campaign of education for families and children and school kids on responsibility for taking care of the pet properly, veterinary care, safety. We want to work on getting no-cost or low-cost fay neuter more available to people who do not adopt from us. We want to help the shelter in any way we can with money for veterinary visits, x-rays, medicines, transport. We do a lot of transport at Glen County Animal Services. A lot of us personally take dogs. We go wherever we have to. We either kind of do a hop, skip, and a jump with people from other portions of the state and even out of state. But we want to work on that. We want to make changes at Glen County Animal Services. So when we get our 501(c)(3), you will hear more about us. We did raise $70 at Island Dog on the 4th of July. And that was our first $70 deposit in the bank. We were very proud. So we press on. I love what I do at the animal shelter, we all do.
Wow, certainly. I'm Joyce Cherry. I've lived here about 12 years. And I've never lived in a place like this, had so many animals on the street. And I found it very shocking. So of course, what did I do? Like most of the animal nut do that I know, I took some home. I carry in my old beat-up truck because I am a widow and I don't live on social security only. And I feed anything that I see on the street. I try to avoid certain neighborhoods because it breaks my heart. So what is my thought? It's always been the same thing. Why is it not possible with the money that is between here and all of the Golden Isles that there isn't somebody with a nice trust fund? I know you're out there. You could take like $50,000 a year and we could hire one veterinarian right out of school, a boy or a girl, doesn't matter. I would prefer a woman, but you know how that goes. I'd love to see a woman commissioner someday. These nice gentlemen, I'm sure they'd love to see a lady in there too. Anyway, if we took $50,000, we hired the person right out of school, and we said, "Young lady, animal control and the Humane Society both have surgeries, operating rooms. Go in there, and we're going to help you find a place to live. And then all you do is neuter and spay all day, all night." Now, I have noticed that Mayor Thompson, a long time ago, had free neuter and spay with a water bill. I don't know what happened to that. I know 2008 came, so there was a problem. If we just charged $20, not... You know, I get told all the time, "Well, a certain vet would do it for $45. You bring the thing in the trap." Well, somebody said that he cuts the year down to here. I can't afford $45. I take care of a lot of stray animals. I won't even tell you about that. Anyway, we had this person, neuter and spay. That's all they do. And $50,000 a year, they have no money to set up a vet clinic of their own. Next year, maybe we get another one. And the average person probably could save $20. You're going to go in there and get a neuter or spay for $20, and it would save all this agony of the murdering. Thank you, Grandma.
Hi, my name is Vicki Green. I've lived in Glen County for over eight years. I was originally, I previously lived in Palm Beach County for 23 years and was very active. And I'm the president of Boston Terry Rescue of Florida. Most of the shelters, or a lot of the shelters down in Florida, contact breed rescues when they get a certain breed in the shelters. I haven't noticed that here in Glen County. There's no reason why somebody working at Animal Control here can't work at trying to get animals into specific breed rescue groups to free up space. Another thing I noticed is the Humane Society has had their facility revamped twice in the eight years I've lived here. Why is a facility that's a mile down the road from animal care and control able to raise the funds to redo their facility and update it when Animal Control is so far behind? Why isn't there an agreement with the Humane Society to take adoptable animals out of animal care and control before they go out of the county and look for animals to bring in that are adoptable? There are so many things that can be done. I really would like to thank Friends of Glen County Animals that are helping to raise funds for these adoptions. But that doesn't answer a lot of the problems. These people who can't afford $50 to adopt an animal, how are they going to afford heartworm medicine? If these dogs are adopted for $25 and then they can't get heartworm medicine, it doesn't help the animal. If these people adopting them then tie the animal out in front of their house or put them in the yard and don't bring them in the house, that doesn't help the animals. So we need to educate. We need to get into the schools. We need to get out there and let people know that they need to be educated about spaying, neutering, heartworm. There is a very low-cost heartworm in IVIMET. You can buy it, attract the supply, but nobody's allowed to tell the secret to people that they can dose the animals with a very small minute amount that costs next to nothing. So what we need to really do is work on getting people in these positions that will get out there and educate and talk to people as well as trying to save these animals. This is like a dirty little secret. When I saw these... This is like a dirty little secret. When I saw these statistics, that's an abomination. In a county like this, to have that kind of euthanasia rate, why can't we use prisoners and people who have to do community service? Why can't you offer some of these people the opportunity to work on their sentence if they're willing to help train the animals, get them cleaned up?
Hi, my name is Catherine Pittsfield, and I've been here a long time. My questions are to you guys. I live in the city. In the last three months, we've had eight cats killed within a two-week period of time by a pack of dogs that is running. Dogs don't work between 9:00 and 5:00. I'm sorry. They didn't get the memo. Animal Control works from 11:00 to 7:00. Dogs and packs don't run until about 10:00 to about 4:00 in the morning. I pay county and city taxes. I'm not getting my money's worth. The statistics that y'all sent me is deplorable. The city had 1,780 calls in 2012. 432 were intakes. What happened to the other 1,348? Nobody gave any explanation about that. 2013, you had 941 calls, you had 634 intakes. What happened to the 1,307? If I ran my business the way you guys run Animal Control, I would be out of business. 422 miles. I used to be a rep. I covered three states. There's no way you can logistically cover 420 miles with two people. You wonder why your gas bill's so high? Because you don't have the numbers of people on the road to do what it is, and Brussels gets left out. After you call, and you race in, and you get on the radio, and you talk to the county commission, you talk to the city commission, then you get some people coming by, "Are you okay? Do you need help?" But, you know, I'm sorry. That doesn't work for me. There's problems out there. You have the money. You've just got to pay attention to what you're doing.
I just wanted to say something real quick. I'm Sherri Coleman. And number one, I'm very proud of my husband. I'm very proud of Marcy, Shelley. They are no longer working out of the shelter. They have been terminated volunteers. But they do a wonderful job. They work very hard. They deserve to be out there helping. My main point I wanted to make tonight, I did not realize until today. I went to lunch, and I spoke with a young lady to announce the meeting. And she said, "Well, so what? It's a dog. It's a cat. Who cares? You've got starving children. You've got homeless people. There's important issues at State Kids. They're just a bunch of dogs and cats." Yes, there is. Number one, I can't do it. My heart can't do that, because I'd be hurting somebody for hurting a child, to be real honest. But the thing that's important that people don't realize is the shelter is open Monday through Friday, 11:00 to 4:00. Well, I don't know about you guys, but I work 9:00 to 5:30. I can't go to the shelter to adopt an animal. And she's like, "Well, you know, they know where to go to adopt." Yeah, but if you're not open, you can't adopt, okay? Saturdays, they close the shelter to go to adoptions, which is great. They go out and pet supply. It's awesome. But the shelter's closed. So you've got all these animals on Saturday when children are out, and they can go and look at an animal, and they can't get in. You have the 10 or 15 that are available at the adoption center. They take them back, put them away, and that's it for the day. I personally would like to see the shelter open more hours a day, so that more people can come in and look at the animals that are available. There's some beautiful animals out there. There's some sweet animals out there. And thanks to, I have not met him yet, a young man named Chuck. He's filming these animals so that you can look at them. Most pit bulls are not adopted. There's some cute ones out there that are part pit that, if you see the personality, you can go, "What a sweet dog," and you would want to adopt. That's a very good thing that's going on now. And I just wanted to ask you guys, which I very much appreciate you guys showing up and showing concern for this, but I would love to see the shelter open a little more hours and a little bit more Saturdays. Is Linda here? Okay, on to the next thing. Mr. Stanley.
I can't read it from back here. Do I really have to use that thing? Does anybody not hear me? How y'all doing? I'm going to take a little bit of your time. I was asked to look into this situation a few weeks ago. Donna came to me, a few other people. I think y'all are on the right track of caring and where you want to go with this shelter. The biggest thing I can recommend to you tonight, two things. One, listen to these people that are here, especially Allison from Hart. She has a lot of good information that'll give you a good insight to what a No Kill Shelter has to go through. The second thing, I truly believe that if we want to achieve this, it's going to have to be a public-private cooperative effort. We are going to have to stand up as citizens who care, putting the time, the effort, the money, to make this happen. If we don't, I'm afraid it won't. The response I'm seeing, I wish I could give my staff maybe staff like this. There's a lot of people here that care, and I think there's a lot more people in Glen County that do care. But we're going to have to step together, pull together, to make this happen. It's going to take planning. It's going to take money. It's going to take cooperation. And I think tonight, the biggest thing we can get from our county commission, and from staff, and from the chief, and I don't think everything's going to die, is work with the community, work with us to make this happen. Cooperate with us. Let us do what we can do. Help us achieve those goals with scheduling, times, money, the whole nine yards. If they will do that, and we're all willing to pull together and make it happen, it can't happen. It's not going to happen overnight, but it can happen. We've got to work towards it. Thank you.
Okay. And Chief Jordan, before I can tell you, I've worked for a lot of politicians. But anyway, I had a very not-friendly episode with the staff at the Animal Control. And in fact, while I was in Savannah, I had an Australian Blue Dog, my boy here. My yard man was there, and I have two Great Danes. And they're probably of my son, who's with First Unit going to Ratt. That's why I have them. But anyway, a gate has been broken. I've had a lot of problems in the area I'm in. But at this time, the dogs got out, and they were charged with, there was a charge of abandonment. So I called the Animal Control, and this one lady speaks to me and says, "We're taking you to court. We're taking you to court." And I said, "Are you saying to me you're taking me to court?" And she said, "Yes, we are." And so I said, "Well, I'll speak with your supervisor. Is she in there?" And, "No, she's not." And I said, "Would you have her call?" And so in the meantime, I talked, called Chief Jordan's office. And I told him what was going on. And this is unreal. I had, we wound up in court. And anyway, it was something else. I had brought in a chief, Dr. Daniel, who gave nothing but a good report on my dogs, their care and everything. But what can you do when you have a mailbox torn off? I had, Mama, you keep asking me questions. What are you asking?
I thought we weren't going to get into personal.
Why should this be personal? It should be for everybody to know.
I thought that was part of the rules. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, but it's no rule when you've got the Animal Control going outside, okay, and them asking me for one of my dogs, and then my neighbor has witnessed them trying to aggravate him to get him to jump out of the yard.
I just thought this wasn't a complaint.
Well, I think it should be. And I'm sorry, if I just go back and get my ex-father, the district attorney people's still in, let him kick me around, whatever. He's a nice man. But anyway. Three minutes? How many? What is it now? I lost. But anyway, I want Chief Jordan to know that they did not want to speak to him, and he has shared that part too.
Ms. Johnston? Uh, that woman just spoke for me. Excuse me? That woman just spoke for me. That was the issue. Okay, and how about Lynn Stevens?
Hi, I'm Lynn Stevens. And I have to say that I've only been involved in this for probably a little over a month. I had no idea what was going on with Glen County Animal Control. I followed Friends of Glen Animals and No Kill Glen. Actually went to the shelter and adopted an American Bulldog Pit Mix week before last, because I knew that his time was up and he was going to die on Thursday. I have seven horses of my own, now three dogs, four cats. All of them have come from bad situations. You have never seen an animal that wandered in my yard at Animal Control, because if they wander in, that's where they stay. My question is, one of our dogs that wandered up has seizure disorder, which is probably why he was thrown away. Well, he's well-controlled on Dina Barretta now. My problem is there's a lack of transparency and a lack of willingness by GCAC to provide the information that we need to better network these animals. The ones who are most at risk, we have asked and asked and asked for a list that you're supposed to go by who's been there the longest. We've asked for a list so that we can aggressively market those animals and try to get them adopted. We have, I know that the volunteers, there have been volunteers who have transported animals out of state. One little dog actually ended up in Colorado at a rescue. A little deaf dog who will go to a veteran. So don't tell me it can't be done. Money has been raised by No Kill, by Friends of Glen Animals, to sponsor all the dogs and cats at the shelter. Networking on Facebook has been the reason that most of the animal adoptions have taken place over the last, at least the last month that I've been involved. And there have been a lot of adoptions. So my question is, if you are a humane individual and you care of anything about life, why is it that you, how can you say that this cannot happen here? How can you say that we can't do it? The groundwork has been laid. We're already doing the things necessary to get this started. How can you tell us, "No, it can't be done"? Because we already know that it can be done. We know we have the volunteers. We know that the resources are already being raised. And a slap in the face of Marcy, Shelley, Donna, these volunteers who've worked so hard. Chuck, Chuck Mischio is in the back. He's doing amazing videos of these animals to find them homes. And he is doing that on his own. He is a volunteer. So don't tell me, and as far as funding goes, the Humane Society talking about donations, you've got a No Kill Shelter, you've got people who are trying to save the animals. You're going to get the donations, and you're going to get them from far and wide. So that is why we're going to say that it cannot be done, when we know it can.
We have a few extra minutes. Anybody else would like to say a word? Tell us who you are.
I'm Trisha Adams, and I've never spoken in front of anybody before, so please bear with me. I am known as one of the Cat Ladies, and I have a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. I, along with several other women in this area, have, in the past 10 years, spayed and neutered probably at least 3,500 cats. We have done this with contributions to my organization. We have done it with some help from the Humane Society. We have done it with help from one or two local vets. It has recently, cost has gone up on our spay-neuterists. Vets are not willing to help us as much. The grants aren't coming like they once were. But we still are out there plugging the law. Not only are we trapping these feral cats, this spaying, we are maintaining the colonies. And my thought, and I'm not a finance major, so I can't do the numbers. However, we do have Animal Services who does have a bit of our clinic back there that could possibly be used for spay-neuter, yes it would. With the cost that these young ladies are helping with, what we pay for spay-neuters, we could get three for one if the cost was low. We would like quality care for these cats when they go in. We want them examined. There are some cats that go in, unfortunately, that have to be euthanized. But again, my thought is, if we could possibly do a spay-neuter clinic, low-cost, believe me, these women could keep you busy. We can do, you know, if we could possibly done even $40 a pop, male or female. Yes, that is a lot, but right now, I would settle for $40. We would keep you busy five days a week. And without a ten or program here in Glen County, you will never get control of the cats. It has to be done. It ought to be done. Several of our colonies, they have died out. There's only one or two left. And they're all over St. Simon's, and there's only a couple of hotspots left because we worked them. But again, if there's any way that Glen County can come up with a low-cost spay-neuter, believe me, with the quantity of cats that come in, we can keep you busy, and I think probably make the salaries for the vet.
Thank you, ladies, gentlemen, too. Once again, I got a couple of minutes. Anybody? You're?
I don't know whether I really need this, but good evening. My name is Gary Cook, and I've been here for the last couple of months. Got interested in, pretty much in the animals. So I really got interested, and Ms. Stevens, then, you know, cleaned her vehicle. So when I told her I wasn't coming, because I seen this pit sitting in her seat. And so when I went to the officer, the pit was at the door, and I'm looking, and I'm looking, and I'm like, "I ain't coming," she said. She didn't move, so I'm like, "Wait a minute." So I creeped the door, and I let the door go back, and she said, "It's not going to bother me." And I walked in, and it was just rambling in me. So what I'm saying, I have a son that's 34, who just got a pit three months ago. He takes that, he's 34, we took him to the kidney booth. And that's his best ring. That is his best ring, so I shouldn't say that, you know, dealing with animals, you know. I love animals, but, you know, I don't own one, but I think I'll be adopted. but I think I'll be able to adopt a one. I'm more than get involved, I just want to say that, and I appreciate everything that everybody does for this, and I just say, being a pit section that we got involved with animals time.
We'll move on to item five on our agenda here. We have our speakers lined up. Our first speaker is Lisa Norton. Lisa represents CHAT, also known as River City. They maintain a mobile adoption center, and Lisa is a unpracticing legal person, and she's going to share some ideas with you.
Thank you all. I need Ms. Carrie to come up and hold this microphone for me, please. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Lisa Norton. I've been president with Citizens for Humane Animal Treatment for about 14 years now. I have recently been selected by the Humane Society of the United States to be a district leader for this area, and the reason I took it was to bring resources and educational material to our folks in this part of the state. I have a little different approach here. I don't know if we might have a few extra minutes. I spent last night until 2:00 in the morning reading the standard operating procedure, reading the ordinances 2-4 for the county, reading the city ordinances. I went over 183 pages of the budget, and I have a little different concern here this evening. I'd like to start with stating that our county administrator, Mr. Hours, and probably with the help of our county attorney, Mr. Montford, made a presentation at the June budget meeting to enable us to get Animal Control out from under the police department. That vote was not carried, although Commissioner Coleman and Commissioner Mary Hunt did vote to not approve that budget to try to get further work on it. Although the commissioners may not be able to address that issue for another year, I would like to state that you are capable of removing employees who are causing problems at Animal Control through addressing the chief of Glen County to further investigate the issue. I'd like to see a review of the use of space at Glen County Animal Control for more effectiveness and to put a vet clinic that is already in existence to use for the public. I'm going to talk in just a minute about Henry Woodman. But I would like to say that from my reviewing the budget, I am requesting that an immediate internal audit be performed because of what I consider to be blatant standard operating procedure infractions. I have reviewed these documents. I would also like to request that the volunteers that have been removed, that financial amount, I believe totaled $150,000 worth of free labor. I would like to see those volunteers reinstated. I would also like for Chief Doran to consider placing non-police officer personnel into Animal Control. I think Glen County is in a minority, that Animal Control does not have to have police officers to conduct that business. We do need officers to conduct code enforcement. However, most animal shelters in the state do not have police officers running these facilities, and I think that's why we get such terms like game one, game two. It's a different type of opinion or flavor that's placed on the shelter that could otherwise be friendlier and more conducive to the public coming in. I'd like to see a committee or panel of citizens and professionals to analyze and project suggestions since the county commissioners refused to listen at two workshops where the Animal Control Advisory Board made very clear pleas and concerns available, and they received no response. Another issue I'd like to bring up is that I reviewed an article from the No Kill Advocacy Center. Although I realize the shortcomings of No Kill facilities, sometimes information can be useful. And I'm referring to an article written by Sheldon Eisenberg called "To the Rescue", and I do advise that if those volunteers are not restored to their original position where they did such useful work for the animals, that they consider invoking the federal statute 42 U.S.C. 1983, known as Section 1983. And this federal statute stops and punishes actions of any government official or employees that seek to retaliate, retaliate or are against or obstruct an activist exercise of his or her First Amendment rights in speaking out against conditions in animal shelters. Part of my research this past evening was to pull up information about NACA, SACCA, and GACA. And those stand for the National Association of Animal Care and Control, the Southeastern Association of Animal Care, and the Georgia Association of Animal Control. Now, I want to refer to a newspaper article where Chief Doran spoke in response to what I feel was a knee-jerk reaction. I think when you have years and months and days of citizens trying to reach their commissioners, reach higher management, and that falls on deaf ears, stronger methods have to be taken, and that's why we're here tonight. In a June 23rd of this year article, Chief Doran details plans for animals, and he states that that does not mean we're going to do any mass euthanization or try to increase the number. I beg to differ with that. I heard rumors that every other cage was told to be emptied because there was a loss of volunteers. I feel like they were very shorthanded. I feel like he was desperate to get things under control, and that meant reducing numbers of animals that didn't have to have cages clean because those volunteers were no longer there to do that service. Also, there was reference made to the National Animal Control Association and Humane Society, in which he intended to bring our Animal Control facility back into compliance with. Well, unfortunately, the Humane Society of the United States and our local Humane Society has nothing to do with standards set for animal sheltering. I think the records would have more properly been for the Department of Agriculture standards and our own standard operating procedures here in Glen County. He stated, we have to maintain a population that is manageable, and I think that's exactly what's being done, and we need to avoid that. I have an email that was produced by Barbara Sancom, and Barbara has put in a lot of hard years out in Animal Control, and she said in this email that the hard and fast move has always been to keep contact between new intakes to a minimal. And she stated that after they were given directives by the chief, that the flawed tactic is akin to walking through a daycare center and wiping every child's nose with the same Kleenex. The new arbitrary directive is poorly thought out, ineffective, and potentially deadly for any of the animals. And I thank Barbara for having the braveness to submit that email. The failure to enforce the standing operating procedures in the county ordinances filed directly on Chief Doran, the budget deficits, which are numerous, and the animal control policies that are not being utilized suggest a complete lack of management. I'm not sure that employee behavior can be rehabilitated when it has been continued for so long. I suggest that those employee resumes be reviewed, and that if termination is determined to set the record straight, then let's get that done. Through a long period of undercover work, through devoted hours of volunteers, there were many infractions discovered. Some of those were smoking on county property and in county vehicles, near children and adoption dates, two-hour lunch breaks of multiple employees from Glen County Animal Control, joy rides resulting in budgetary abuse of gasoline allowances and taxpayer dollars and wasted manpower. Why do some employees at Animal Control make more salary than the actual director? I don't fully understand how the police department works when it moves police personnel into various offices, but I understand that instead of a cut of salary, they come in with maybe even an additional salary when they're moved from 911. I know our director, Beverly Morris, does not make top salary as a director out of Animal Control. I will state that the standard operating procedure encourages courteous, kind, effective, helpful behavior of employees. That has not been my personal situation. Over the years, I've had numerous attempts to reach someone by telephone and never had the phone picked up or returned phone calls. These employees have forgotten that their salaries are paid by us, and we will no longer tolerate these examples of rudeness. I ask for an immediate employee contract review and possible termination from the fraction statement. In reviewing the budget, this was June 23rd, 14th printout of the fiscal year. It covered 2012 through 2013 and the projected 2014 through 2015. I found a lot of issues. I'm curious if we're tattooing animals. There was a line item for green tattoo roll-on ink, $145 for toilet cleaner, $1,000 a printer drone cartridges, membership dues to organizations like the Humane Society of the United States and NACA and American Humane Society, and the reason put in the budget was that these membership dues guaranteed hurricane assistance. I doubt that. One thing I was curious about is a failure to shop for bulk for supplies. There were a lot of numerous small food purchases, some of them high-dollar food purchases of Hillsfood. Another question raised was rabies supplies came from various locations, including Island Animal Clinic, Southeast Georgia Pine Harbor, Daniel Clinic, Coastal Animal, Cheek, Golden Isles. And some of these locations were in Kingsland, Yolomia Dairy, Jessup-Hinesville. Are we having to drive to pick up rabies medication? Is it being shipped? Is that an efficient use of our manpower? Bulk cap store purchases, leather gear, annual replacement of $400. What happens to salary positions that are not filled? For a while this year, we were short two people, and I'm curious what that salary amount happened. We had over $726 of bank service charges. How can that happen? In the fostering area, I have a concern that the fostering agreement contains a confidentiality clause, and I'm wondering if our county attorney did prepare that document because I believe it's now more in the trend to have the bail lifted, more transparency in government, and I fail to understand why any government contract would have a confidentiality clause, and I ask that that be reviewed. The fostering agreement is a six-page contract, and it resembles one of the toughest legal documents I've seen over. Standard operating procedure, akin to smoking. The SOP states that rabies inoculations are not administered at Glen County Animal Control, and therefore, that furthers my concern about where are these rabies purchases that are on receipts coming from, and how are we obtaining that? Animals must be healed for seven days, cards are to be kept on our animals, and that trap agreements with deposits are only for the elderly or the handicapped. Cleaning issues. I'd also like to mention that we've had a vet on the premises, and a lot of the staff could not state what her purpose was there, and if she was employed, drawing a salary, and yet this vet did contribute an article to the Brunswick News stating that she advised, she examined, she treated, and never saw an animal that needed medical attention. Well, I can tell you right now, if you saw the Department of Ag, 38-page packet that has been circulating, up her respiratory is rampant. She stated, there is nothing but professional conduct. For the above infractions, I encourage those in charge of this meeting tonight to go further than your county commissioner and provide a copy of this video and a transcript to the Attorney General's Office, to the Secretary of State, for the Professional Licensing Board, and any other agency that might have an overseeing contribution to rectifying some of these problems. Now, I know Commissioner Tommy Black with the Department of Agriculture, I like him. I've been asked to host a seminar for them. I would be glad to do so. I would like to note that the Department of Agriculture is responsible for checking our shelters. There's over 3,000 in the state of Georgia. We had inspections here in Glen County on April 12th of 2012, of September 2012, of November 2012, of April 29th, 2013, of December 12th, 2013, of May the 8th of this year, and of May the 23rd this year. Now, I would like to suggest that shelter records suggest extreme inadequacies in inspections and the timeframe allotment suggesting forewarning of inspections. I do not know that to be true, but it is amazing to me, and we have requested under the Open Records Act copies of these shelter inspections, and every single place is checked, passed. There are no fails. The pictures that you've seen of disease, of sickness, of death, of uncleanness, that cannot be corrected in 24 hours. There is something very wrong going on, and I would like to encourage the Department of Agriculture in a mode of reconstruction between all of us to possibly deputize volunteers to help with shelter inspections, to cover a larger area. Our building at Animal Control was brought about by Henry Woodman, and I had the pleasure of talking to Henry Woodman's daughter, Evelyn Ramsey, this past week. And there was a 2003 article put out by Terry Dixon, the Times Union, and he noted her battle with cancer and said that she had served on the advisory board of Glen County in spearheaded efforts to build a new animal shelter. Jeff Chapman, and I referenced a statement that he made in that article. He said that Ms. Woodman's attitude was, until I die, I'm living. And would that same philosophy be correct in applying to the animals at Glen County Animal Shelter under the current conditions? I would like to state that these are not isolated instances. The present information tonight encompasses an effort of investigation spanning several years. My personal experience has covered over 14 years of working with personnel. Henry Woodman's dedication in public service and as a steward of the animals deserves a better legacy than we have in existence today. And I can only guess how she would feel about the mismanagement in field, and that if she would really still want her plaque with her name on that field, I would like to hear.
Our next speaker on the agenda, Allison Woodman. She is a representative of Park Incorporated. She runs basically the No Kill Shelter over Macintosh County, which has been a great success, and I'm welcome.
Hi, my name's Allison Woodman, and I've been involved with animals for 28 years. I work for a local vet here in Brunswick, Dr. Oopman, and some of my clients are here. But, Heart of Macintosh, we were in the shelter for, I'll leave it up there, three years. But, Heart of McIntosh, we were in the shelter for, I'll leave you up there, three years while we carried my time medicating the animals and making sure that everything went well. And we decided that the easiest way to ensure everything going good was to maybe think about running the shelter. Well, I'm telling y'all right now, it's a big undertaking, that's for sure, but we took over running the shelter in October 2012. Every single month since we took over the shelter, I'm proud to say that we have met No Kill status every single month since we moved. But it is a lot of work. That's just what I want to impose on everybody. You have to have different groups of people. We don't have a bunch of people in Heart. There's probably 11 or 12 of us that give it all heart and soul. It's a whole nother full-time job. But if you've got volunteers, you've got people that want to make it work, you can make it work. But the difference also is, we're not as big as the county as you are, so we take in almost 900 animals a year. You guys over here take in, I think it's almost 4,000 animals a year. That's a huge difference. But that being said, you are a bigger county, you've got more money than we have, and you've got a lot more people. Your population is, you know, four or five times what McIntosh County is. So it can be done. You have to have money, you have to have people who adopt the animals, and you have to have transports. Transports are going to be one of your biggest things because there's no way you can adopt out as many animals around. Also, you have got to have a very, very active community spay and neuter. If you don't have that, we have already seen, we have been busting our butts trying to get people in the community to get their animals spayed and neutered. We had a grant, a Department of Ag grant, that we quickly used up. Getting them spayed and neutered, people didn't have to, the people that could not afford it didn't have to pay one penny. All they had to do was pay for their rabies shots, that's it, because they can at least afford $14 for a rabies shot, I feel. We have cut down the amount of puppies and kittens that actually have come into the shelter this summer has probably been, I would, I think it would be accurate to say, has probably been 1/8 of what we normally see coming out. And that is all. All of it is active spay and neuter, because the only way to quit them coming in is stop them at the sources. And, you know, you put it out there, you get vets to come onboard helping with a reduced spay and neuter amount, and if the people can afford the rabies shot, and they can also, we do rabies clinics. Veterinarians are very happy to step up and do rabies clinics. We have a few every year. It's $5 for a rabies shot. I think everybody can afford $5 for a rabies shot, and it's required by the law that they have a rabies shot. So with getting the word out about what you want to do, raising money, you've got to have a good foster group too, because I tell you right now, there's not enough cages up there to house all these animals without there being a good foster group. That being said, if, you know, Glen No Kill, you have to also supply all of these materials to everybody. So it's not like, you know, Stephanie, you've got a little tiny dog that we're fostering. I have personally through my house, and this is for a lot of the members in Heart, I added up the other day, in the past three years, I have had 365 dogs and cats pass through my house that I have fostered. [laughter] You know, and you do, you know, we all have foster failures. I fostered a failure five times. We need to have like an AA group because it happens and it's terrible. You know, well, it's not terrible, you love them, but you do, yeah, that's the whole point, that's why you do what you do. So everybody has to be ready too. It's not just doing a little bit of time, you pet a little puppy and kitten. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of hard work. You've got to have volunteers coming in, helping out every which way, socializing animals, walking animals. So with a good, I mean, really, almost, almost on top of the list is going to have to be, you've got to actively spay and neuter animals in your county. We've got this, well, our feral colony is reducing only because of the fact that they're getting so friendly, they're not feral anymore. Seriously, some of them, it's like, we've got this one cat, Joe Young, and it's, he is in, he's in everything. He is a pain. It's like, Joe Young, stop, you're trying to walk dogs, and he's running up, and then if they do something, he hits them. So, but they will, even feral cats can be done, it's just, all you have to do is show kindness, really put your money where your mouth is, and be prepared to take in an animal in your life. You don't have to take in a huge amount like some of us do, you know, just one. Think about it, you go up to the shelter, you foster one animal, you give the animal a chance to not only live in a life, you know, in a family environment, you help them get party trained, you help if they got behavioral issues, just a lot of different things. You can take in one, or you can take in 10 or however amount that you want to do. So it's just all your toys. You have to supply everybody with the food, medical care, and the cages to keep them contained in. But it can be done. It can be done, and you've got a lot more people than we've got money-wise. When you break everything down, we broke everything down into the amount of animals we have and the amount of money that the county gives us and everything else. And so it basically comes out to, so what you're looking at is to keep dogs alive, and sometimes we had over, I mean, a year, a year and a half. When they get adopted, we're so happy. All the bully breeds have a bad rap, they're not easy to transport because everybody is, you know, is a bulldog. They're banned from, anything, bulldog, you can't even rent a place. I had a woman call me a couple of weeks ago trying to find a place for her bulldog because her son was trying to find a house to buy because he can't find anywhere to rent and keep his bulldog, who is nice, has never done anything he's not supposed to do, and they just get a bad rap. But you're looking at roughly $100 and something dollars per animal, keeping it alive through the duration. We give everybody a heartworm pill every month, medications get expensive, but there are programs that you can get into. We get all our vaccines from shelter programs. We get, the drug companies give you a shelter program, reduce rate drug vaccines. We purchase our vaccines cheaper than veterinarians, and Brunswick can purchase them for. So I've got a lot of information, so whoever needs, get in touch with any of us at Heart. Hannah DeSoto, who was a co-founder of Heart back in the 90s, is here, and she's got tons of information. She's our transport queen. And if you have enough people to pull together and to get into your own little groups where everybody knows exactly what they got to do, if you get organized, it can be done. And just ask around. All of us have information that we're willing to share, we'd be happy to help anybody, because it doesn't matter what county your animal's in. If the animal is safe, when there's nothing wrong with it from euthanasia, I mean, that's just sad. That, it can be done, but everybody, you know, you work hard together, and you can pull it all together, and you get suckered in, let me tell you quickly. And another thing too, you talk about veterinarian costs and so forth, if you get a registered vet tech to come onboard, to volunteer their time like I do, then they can do the heartworm checks for you, they can do the fecal checks, administer vaccines, a veterinarian has to administer the rabies vaccine, and of course, during the surgeries. But any of you that know vet techs around and about, talk to them, see if you can get some of them to come and donate just a little bit of time, and it'll cut down a lot on your vet bills, a whole lot. Even down to skin scrapings, diagnostics, up the respiratory and cats that runs rampant, a bunch of different things. And come up to the shelter and have a look. We're right off of I-95 and right past the outlet mall, and we'd love to have y'all come look and come and see what we've done, see our No Kill Shelter in the workings. Thank y'all.
Our next speaker, Kathy Jones, Captain Representative of ARF. She's from Wayne County and has tons and tons of experience that she can share with us all. Thank you.
Like Allison, if I were married, you would have divorced me already. Absolutely. But that's not true. I actually am Glen County. I reside in Wayne County. I've lived there 31 years. When I got into rescue work, I did call the local shelter and offered my services. I wanted to foster dogs. You did not have a foster program. So because of where I live, halfway to Jessup, I got in contact with ARF, and I think the reason that I'm here is to show all of you what a small rescue can do that can help your facility. ARF, in 2009, we had a local resident go into the pound just to see what was going on, and she was kind of looking for a dog. So as she was talking to the officer, you know, and she chose her dog, and she said, "Well, what about the rest of these?" And he said, "Well, we hold for five days." How unfortunate, you have seven. Wayne County has five-day holding. The state only makes you hold them three days. So after the five days, they're euthanized. So Wanda Grover, the original founder, in 2009, November of 2009, went immediately to the chief and said, "What can I do? We want to get together a rescue organization. Can you work with us and let ARF pull animals from your pound?" So went from the chief to the captain to the commissioners, and then Animal Refuge Foundation was born. In December of 2010, they pulled their first dog named Nick, just in the nick of time. So what, the way we work is, every Wednesday, we go into the pound. We'll be back in a moment. You have to have, we have, a veterinarian that meets with us every Wednesday at 3:30. We go to the pound at 3 o'clock every, every single Wednesday. And for every foster that we have available in our program, and currently we have 12 fosters that are under ARF, it's no liability to the county, we sign the dogs out ourselves. ARF takes responsibility for those dogs. Here's the form that comes from the Georgia Department of Agriculture, signing it into the ARF program. We have 12 fosters, and currently we have 32 fosters, and Wednesday, tomorrow, we'll pull eight more. We can have up to 40, or else you have to pay more to have your license. So we always have 40, but we've had some adoptions this week, so currently we're at 32, and so tomorrow, whatever is left at that pound, we will pull it. So the way we do is, we pull the dogs on Wednesday at 3 o'clock, we meet the officers there, and we're very different. We're a pound, we're not a shelter. They're open one hour a day for you to come rescue your dog. Most people there don't even know the pound exists. I'm the publications speaker for them, and I'm telling you, half of the people don't even know the pound exists. There is no medical treatment there, none. So y'all are far ahead of us in that respect. So on Wednesdays, we pull the dogs at 3 o'clock, and we have a contract with a local veterinarian that gives us rescue rates that is about half of what the public pays. So within ARF, we have seven board of directors, and we have five in our executive committee. We have a president, we have a vice president, we have a treasurer, and we have a shelter agent, and we have a foster agent. So we run it very smoothly. It's kind of micromanaging it, if you will, but it works. So every Wednesday, we pull the dog at 3 o'clock, we drive straight to the veterinarian's office, and we have that dog completely vetted, not spayed or neutered at that moment, but completely vetted, so we know what we've got. The fosters meet us at the veterinarian's office, they load up their foster, and they take it home and put it in a home environment. So we socialize them, and within two weeks, we spay or neuter that animal. After the dog or cat has been spayed or neutered, then it goes on our website, Animal Refuge Foundation, or Pet Finder, or Rescue Me, or all kinds of other websites that you can get these dogs out there. And someone spoke of breed-specific rescues that will come in. When we go in there on Wednesday and we see a Boston Terrier, pick up the phone and call Boston Terrier of South Carolina. We have a Golden Retriever rescue. We have rescues that we just pick the phone up and call them, and they will come get these dogs if they have room, and usually they do, they will make room for a full-lotted anything. So, anyway, so then we advertise the dogs on all of these rescue sites, and we charge $125 to adopt this dog. And for that, you get full vetting, it's microchipped, and it's spayed or neutered. So now, I came onboard, and I feel a little bit hypocritical because I am Glen County, but I live halfway, so my efforts started with ARF back in September. Be careful when you offer to help a rescue person. So I called and said I wanted to foster, and immediately, you know, started fostering, and at that time, they were running a spay and neuter once a month, which they were doing about 20 animals. And we would go in as volunteers and work instead of the vet techs doing it, we had a doctor. So very quickly, we realized that, you know, we weren't doing what the community needed. 25 dogs a week, that just uncut it. So we decided to quote, "build our own spay and neuter clinic." So someone asked Kathy, and I still feel a little hypocritical because I used all my connections in Glen County to get this done. Made a few phone calls, we had a lady in Wayne County give us 10 acres and a big mobile home. We went in and completely gutted it, and because of a lot of donations, even from my friends and large businesses in Glen County, we have less than $1,000 in our clinic that is fully operational. We now, we were putting a Band-Aid on the problem, and now we do our clinic once a week. We, you know, we'd like to do it twice a week, and occasionally we do. So second week of January, we started spaying and neutering. And again, a little hypocritical, I hired a Glen County veterinarian that comes, my connections are here, that comes once a week and does a low-cost spay and neuter. It is $70, which I've heard some of you talk about 40, and I wish we could do that, we can't. $70 for dogs and $50 for cats. So we get, again, about 20 a week done versus 20 once a month, so it works. Now, another program I hopped onboard with because going in with the shelter agent every Wednesday, immediately I started going with her because she needed some assistance. Well, she didn't know what a bleeding heart I had, and what she had grown, I hate to say it, she was a realist, she knew that how many fosters she had, that's all she could take. Well, I started going with her, and I was like, "But wait a minute, wait a minute, what about those five?" And she's like, "Kathy, close the door. Kathy, close the door." Well, next meeting came around, we meet once a month, by the way, next meeting came around, so I stood up and said, "We have to do something about the rest of those dogs being left down there. What can we do? Why can't I photograph these dogs and get them on Facebook and get them seen?" And they're like, "We don't want to upset the county. You know, we've all, we've got a good working relation with the chief, with the officers, don't push your luck, Kathy." So a couple more weeks went by, and again, I said, "Can we go talk to the chief?" And the president of ARF looked at me and said, "Okay." And we did. We went and met with the chief, who then went to the county attorney, who then went to the commissioners, and they agreed we had to give them a program. So I wrote out a program. You'll see the yellow bulletin board back there. December the 16th, I started a program called Last Chance, brought to you by ARF. I go in every Monday and photograph the dogs that have been there five days. There is nowhere for them to go. They have to leave there with this rescue paperwork filled out. They have to have a destination. All of you that work in rescue know that, you can't turn them out. So every Monday at 3 o'clock, I go in and I photograph all the dogs or cats that are on death row for Thursday morning, 8 o'clock Thursday morning, they're going to die. So I started this program with one little silly woman, and now we have 1,900 followers in six months on Facebook. And the first week, December the 16th, let me tell you the failure. We took in all the paperwork, and we advertised all these dogs, not a we, it's, I stay on a computer 48 hours, literally. So for 48 hours, I'm networking these dogs, answering calls, I'm going to answer you like that, if you want this dog, I'm going to call your vet, we're going to do an interview, but if you don't have a vet, then we'll call your boss man. I've got to know something about you before this dog leaves the premises. I treat it like my own foster. My point is this, the first week, we had nine dogs. I had 13 people show up to adopt nine dogs. Well, it was a little chaotic, and the officers were overwhelmed having to do the paperwork, and they just said, "We can't do this program." And so we said, "Well, we'll go back to the drawing board. Can we handle the adoptions?" Because, see, we were letting them handle the adoption. So we went back to the drawing board, and we drew up a contract, two-page contract for And so two weeks, we were shut down, and dogs died, and I was sad, and we were working very hard on getting this program back up. So gave it to the county attorney, he approved our contract, so now, ARF, a rescue. Any of you can form a little rescue and get your right paperwork and get your 501 and get your 501(c)(3), and if your chief would so kindly allow the rescues to come in and handle some of the adoptions. Pull the dogs yourself, handle your own adoptions with your rescue organization. That's what we do. The ones that are left, back to Last Chance. These are, these are 100 dogs that from December the 16th till June the 1st were adopted, walked out of there into beautiful, lovely homes. They have gone into, and like I said, I do a vet reference check, and I'll call you boss and anybody else, but anyway, my point is. So now we photograph on Monday, we network them for 48 hours, literally, and on Wednesday, we meet the adopters at the pound, and they come and pick up their dog. I've had one failure. Well, let me back up, this is 100. We now are up to 113 dogs that have gone into loving homes. I've had one failure. And the lady was calling me and saying, "This four-month-old dog, she just keeps crying." And I said, "Well, why is she crying?" "Well, she just, she just keeps wanting to come inside with me." And I said, "What do you mean? You're not keeping her inside with you?" "Well, no, I can't have this big furry dog in my house." And I said, "Okay, I'll send somebody out to get the dog." Just got a foster out to get the dog, and they adopted it within 24 hours because it was such an amazing puppy, and I told her the kind of dog she wants, they sell them at Cracker House. Thank you, and even though I am in Wayne County, if I can help, you know, in any way get lives saved in this direction, many of you know how to contact me, I'll be glad to help.
Thanks Kathy, I appreciate your comments there. Next item on the agenda, we're really going to give you them over the table there, and I'm tuned in to ask these questions if you would like, or if anybody has out there a question that they would like to direct to any particular person over here.
We have index cards for people who have questions.
Second?
We have index cards for people who want to ask a question.
Okay, all right. Somebody said there's a gray automobile, it's got the lights left on. In the meantime, while we're doing this, if you would like to comment on any particular question or... Okay, I'll start off here with this question for our discussion of the program, and we'll go through all of these, try to get as many as we can. First question is, this is directed to commissioners sitting at the table there. To those of you who voted against the Assistant County Administrator position, what was your reason? Mr. Howard's recommended this position, and their mention was recently held by someone who recently retired.
The position was held by somebody who's recently retired. The question was, why didn't the Assistant County Administrator's position get filled? Well, one thing when you add personnel is you're adding a fixed cost for many years into the future. This was, we were looking at approximately $125,000 with benefits for that position. It appears on the surface, after hearing the comments tonight, and depending upon how our revenues go, that I would support, at some point during the year, funding that position and hiring someone to fill that. Always, from the initial budgeting process, and looking at the other items that we had to fund, for example, juvenile court, the other positions that we did build, salary increases that we had committed to, if there wasn't money in the budget, from my point of view, to fund the $125,000 position, that would be continuing, continuing for who knows how long. So, but based upon comments and input from people that have had some, something to say to the commissioners about the position, and how we might restructure some of these functions, I would support, if the economy is strong, I would support funding that position at a later point during the year.
I really don't need the microphone because I supported it from the start. I'm one of the ones who proposed it. Mr. Howard and I talked about this a long time ago, and I thought it was a great idea to take animal control and emergency management agency and some other functions and put them under the position of county administrator, so I probably supported it. Okay, next question here, says per the Glen County website, the vision includes leading-edge government. Shouldn't no kill be a part of that?
Yes.
Sure, sure, I think we all support no kill. What I've been able to learn, and we've heard tonight from the other locales, to accomplish no kill is going to mean adopting out the animals to look to various locations that have a shortage. And there are, there are, there are locations that have a shortage of animals, and are , you know, we... Thank you, thank you, but I think still, based upon comments from the main side director, we will never adopt out all of the animals in Glen County. So we need, we need a function, a source, a method of locating, maybe like the lady spoke earlier about South Carolina, always having an interest in a particular type of dog. I think that's one of the methods of which we reach, no kill, because we are finding homes outside the county.
Well, I think that gets back to our ostrich cards. I think that gets back to the ostrich program that you have to have in place, because they have so much room. We have 76 kennels, we have, we have 76 kennels, so that's all we have the room for, of course, we can put several dogs, the others, different breeds. But one thing I think needs to happen is, for no kill, Glen County to work, all of these groups that are here tonight, we need to all come together. As we spoke, the lady from Wayne County, the lady from Mattox County pointed out, it's going to take money, and it's going to take time. And I know there's people here that's willing to donate the time, and just have to come up with some way to fund it. One of the things that we did do this year, for the first time, is that this budget included $25,000 just for spay and neuter. I spoke to the other commissioners, and told them that before, this was always the responsibility of the volunteers and the Animal Control Advisory Board to read, to raise the money for the spay and neuter program. We're going to have a spay and neuter program in Glen County that needs to be the responsibility of Glen County to take. Okay, the next question is directed at Chief Doring. Said, "Last year, Glen County Animal Control volunteers contributed approximately $150,000 worth of time and effort to Glen County Animal Control. Staff consistently complains about lack of time, money, and resources. Why, why then have volunteers been treated so poorly, unprofessionally, and actually fired?"
Multiple points for multiple question there. Let me begin with the part about the volunteer group. I don't know what the numbers are, and I don't refute them, and I'm certain they probably are there then and now. There's still a lot of volunteers out there. The last I looked, there were 26 on the list. I don't see 26 out there every day, and I do go visit the center, unannounced, to make sure that staff does not know I'm coming. I have accessed the entire facility on my own. I go on weekends, I go at night, because I want to see what it looks like when I was there. Volunteers is what it's all about. Most of the staff out there, if not all of them, were volunteers at one side. That's where it came from. And even now, we're currently advertising for a new position that the commission gave, which I expect that some of the volunteers will probably apply for. I don't know that for sure. We want to look at that. As far as the mistreatment goes, it goes both ways. I have seen, I've been personally mistreated by volunteers, and I understand. And I want to address the issue as it is. And I will say here and tell you, I have looked at both sides of things. There are always two sides to a story. When my staff complains to me, just like when you complain to me, I do listen. I do go by. I do inspect. I get the facts as I can get them. I don't go on rumors. I don't go on what somebody tells me. I don't go on hearsay. I want to look, I want to see, I want to ask the questions, I want to do the research. I want to see are we, are we where we need to be? And we're not where we need to be. So are improvements that need to be made. Some improvements already have been made. There's been no knee-jerk reactions, nobody's been fired. There's been three volunteers dismissed. I only dismissed two. I can't speak to the commission. The commission does what the commission needs to do. They set the policies, and some of you have read, I presume, the county ordinance. Those are my marching orders. That's the law. I have to follow that law. I have no authority to labor, and I'm not going to. I give the commission the advice when I ask for it, and sometimes when they don't, and like you, I have to respect them. Your opinion is ideal. Tonight is not about bashing people. I didn't come here to be bashed. I didn't come here to hear people get bashed. I came here with the interest like you. What can we do better to listen? Kathy, great. There are many things that we can do, one of which, the, the old position that you will actually tap out for announcement, and then next week, it'll come in the application, we'll look at it. And the whole idea, if you were there at that work session with the commission, was that full-time paid position will go towards more efforts for the adoptions. They'll be coordinating more of the transfers, developing these relationships, at least that's my marching orders, to go whether it be Jacksonville, South Carolina, whether it be... See, we don't want to compete too much with you, Kathy, and others, but we want to learn from what you're doing, and this person will be given that construction about going out and building these relationships. The best thing we can do, is if yesterday, if there was some feelings hurt, I don't hope that people were kind of for yesterday. I want to build on today. And it doesn't matter if someone out there, that I may have hurt your feelings. I want to come out here today, tomorrow, and look and see what we can build on to make things better. For those of you who don't know, that center out there was built in 2001. Historically, if you go back, we didn't even have a shelter. It was out at the airport, prior to that, it was down in the city, and graciously, we got the center ran out. And what's nice about that is we maintain 150 to 190, and that's an average, every day, of dogs and cats in that center. It's a lot of animals every day to have to take care of. We are fortunate in Glen County. We have a seven-day holding period. And I may be, I'm answering a question, but I can get long-winded for those of you who ever known me.
Actually, if you would stand up, and y'all are, some of the folks want to see you up here, and they're waiting back, so they can actually do stand up to you.
Very easy.
Okay, next question I have here, this is directed to, once again, Chief Doring and the board of commissioners, and says, "What is the reason I have not been reinstated as a volunteer? If you have all received proof that I signed in as a citizen on the day that I was dismissed on June 10th for asking about Pinky, a cat, that I followed from intake to death, asking an employee about well-being of an animal that's not interfering with staff and their job, it is their job, when can I expect to be reinstated?"
The question came from me.
As it stands now, if it's you, you will not be reinstated.
See, if you stand...
You won't be reinstated unless the issue has been addressed, because since it came up, I have to deal with staff issues. When staff complains to me about being mistreated, I look at the facts, and I have to rely on some things of base value, just like you did. And when I went out there and told, the staff told me that there was interference going on with operations, staff recommended to me, because I don't believe in micromanaging, I'm not going to unless I have to, we have to, only in as much as I need to know what's going on. Staff recommended dismissal, they do serve at the pleasure of the staff, and we dismiss. Simple micromanage.
The proof is on the wall. There's the email from Beverly Morris. There's the sign-in, where I signed in as a citizen that day, not as a volunteer. You don't dismiss a citizen. There's Pinky. You don't respond. There's the proof on the wall. Those are the facts.
This next question I have here is also, this note is directly to Commissioner Strickland. Says, "You were very vocal and adamant about Marcy Desark's removal from the advisory board. What did you do to educate yourself about the situation? Did you attempt to speak with Mr. Desark? Simply, or were you simply carrying out Chief Doring's wishes?"
No, I didn't speak to Marcy. I'm sorry. I did not speak to Marcy, and let me assure you that I don't work for Chief Doring. I work for all of you. And the fact of the matter is, Chief Doring works for the board of commissioners. And so, the only reason, the only problem I had with Mr. Desark was that there was some interference, some things going on at the shelter at the time that needed to be corrected, and this is the way the board of commissioners approached it. I'd like to comment on that also. I would probably vote against Marcy, but I think I made, I think I made a mistake. I know I made a mistake. Apologize, apologize, and I, I think she was an outstanding legislature board member. I wouldn't vote against her again. So I stand in front of you and say, say that I admit to have made a mistake in that instance, and I apologize to you for it.
Okay, we have one final question here. This is directed to Chief Doring. Says, "You have publicly stated that you would not care if Glen County Animal Services was pulled from the Glen County Police Department. If that is the case, then why have you resisted allowing this to happen?"
I don't dictate, sorry, and I don't tell the commissioners what to do. I'm a soldier first, I do what I'm told. If this commission tells me to run a facility, I'm going to run a facility. If they choose to take it out from underneath me, I don't care in that respect. It's not that I don't care about the facility, it has nothing to do with it. It just simply has to do with, it's not within my authority to say what I will have or what I won't have. And I respect everything the commissioner tells me what to do. You know as well as I do, it takes four more to create a policy, i.e. county ordinance plus. And I respect that, whatever it may be. Animal Control's a wonderful group. We have a wonderful facility. I don't want it torn apart.
We need your leadership.
Okay, folks, we promised a two-hour, two-hour meeting and it's pushing that right now. Just like a couple of final comments right here. Certainly appreciate each and every showing up. Support that I've had from the volunteers and the field board. Thank you for your time and effort. Gentlemen at the table, I certainly appreciate y'all making an appearance tonight. Hope you took some notes, hope you learned some things tonight in Tyler County. Ladies and gentlemen, if you have any additional comments that you would like to make, feel free to contact any of us on our email addresses, they are wide open to the public. And certainly that would be something that I think everybody should certainly participate in if you have any additional comments or questions that you need to ask the public.